Good evening. Yes. Today is Tuesday, July 19th, and a special board meeting of the Salem Kaiser School Board is called to order. This meeting is a work session. Everyone is present tonight on the board except for Director Bethel. And tonight, we've asked Director Shandra Giri to read the welcome message.
Thank you Chair. Good evening. Buenos tardes. Good afternoon. Welcome. E. Beninvidos to the Salem Kaiser School Board Meeting. At all times, whether we meet in person or virtual, as we are tonight, we strive to be inclusive, respectful, and welcoming to our students, staff, educators, administrators, board members, and all community members. We welcome people of all genders, people of African descent, Black, African-American, Asian descent, Arab descent, European descent, those who identify as Hispanic, Latinx, people indigenous to this land, and people of mixed and multiple descents. Languages spoken in our communities are welcome. Spanish, English, indigenous languages, sign languages, Chakosie, Somali, Russian, Chinese, Vietnamese, and many more. People with disability, visible or invisible. People of all religions, believers in all faiths or creeds, gay, lesbian, bisexual, heterosexual, pansexual, transgender, queer, two-spirit, or others for whom none of the labels fit. Survivors, your emotions, joy, bliss, grief, rage, indignation, contentment, and disappointment. Your families, genetic and otherwise, our veterans who proudly served and are currently serving our country. Our elders, those here in the room, in our lives, and those who are passed away. People impacted or displaced by the war in Ukraine and other violent conflicts. Yes, and finally, we'd like to welcome the ancestors who lived in this land where we live and work. Welcome. The spirits of the Santium, Kalapoya, Salets, and Grand Ronde. The natives who lived in this area before the Europeans came. Welcome. E. Beninvidos. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, I'd now like everyone to join me in doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Madam Chair, it's really difficult to hear over here, just so you know, because of the fan. So, we probably want the air, but people need to speak up.
Okay, no problem. If we can all be mindful of that.
Yeah, I could hear that Satya was speaking, but I couldn't really hear his words.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well. We might all melt. We'll see how long we can go, right? Okay. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so as long as we just really project into the mics, we should be good to go. Good? Okay. So, we're gonna move on to number two, Board Strategic Planning for 2223. So, we've talked a lot over the course of the last year. Through OSBA. And so, tonight is the first time that we're going to be sharing different ideas and priorities that we all have as board directors for this coming year and potentially beyond. So, there might be items that we know cannot be accomplished in one school year. So, they might be multi-year ideas or projects. But it's really a brainstorming night. Get your ideas out, talk about the why. We're asking that each director have around five to seven minutes total to explain or present your ideas. And then, the next step would be that we would work to group the ideas, plans, projects by themes, and then work to craft three to five strategic goals for the school board for this year. So, pretty simple, straightforward process. Tonight is supposed to be somewhat free-flowing so that directors have ample opportunity to share their priorities for this coming year. With that, I would look for volunteers. We can do, you know, if you have multiple ideas to share, we can go around one time and come back, or you can share all of yours at once, totally up to you as a director. I'm flexible. So, I'll look for volunteers at this time.
Chair, I have a process question.
Okay, Director Shandra Giri.
Thank you. So, today, we're going to share some ideas, but... Okay, today, we're going to share some ideas, but when we have a strategic planning session, will we have somebody who will be like a moderator and help us with the strategic planning? Just like what we had when the man, Mr. Adams from OSBA came and helped us.
Not that we've discussed so far. I think we are capable of doing strategic planning as a board with the depth of experience and knowledge that we have. And so, you know, we have a lot of work to do, and I think we need to go through a fairly rapid strategic planning process to start getting down to doing the work. So, the process I've laid out is what we plan to do for our strategic plan. If we reach a point... If we reach a point where we feel like we're stuck or something, I'm happy to explore bringing in a facilitator. But I think with the agreements that we've explored with Vince from OSBA, and then putting our ideas forward and coming up with strategic goals and actions, plans behind each of those strategic goals, that would be what a strategic plan is. Director Hyun had had her hand up. You're ready to go? This, we learned last time, is there's some channel that's faulty. So, sometimes the monitors turn on and sometimes not. Welcome.
Lovely. Okay, so, obviously, we didn't have a lot of time to put something together. We got assigned this Sunday evening. So, what I did is I reached out to community members that I communicate regularly to find out what it is that is the most important to them. So, I have three sections that kind of fit with the three items. And I also have some of these that are related to Director Bethel as well. I talked to her, and I'll let you know those that she felt were important. So, hold all students accountable for their actions. A few students make it impossible for many to learn. Reduce violence in schools. Oh, this is safety and behavior, by the way. One parent said, "District policy that a teacher cannot bring up something in an event involving their child to a parent is very wrong. How can someone address a problem if they are unaware of it?" I don't know the policy she's referring to. I'm just telling you what a parent said. And the parent also said, or it might have been another one, "The adversarial attitude of the district towards parents and community needs to change." So, I also have on here, return SROs. And of course, we still have that request pending to have that discussion in a board meeting. Danielle is also wanting SROs, student behavior management, which fits into basically what I talked about. The second is transparency and inclusion. When it comes to things where the district involves a community, make sure this includes all community, not just special interest groups. Many parents are feeling left out. This would include book selection and policies like the transgender bathroom policy. Such as establishing a community... I think this was from a parent, said such as establishing a community and parent book review task force to complete a full review and assessment of all library books with recommendations to be presented to the board for review and approval. And ensure that all stakeholders, parents and taxpayers, et cetera, have an ability to easily review all curriculum and give feedback. They need to be able to review well ahead of when it will be in the classroom. And I've heard that Wes Lynn has this in place. I have not been able to check to see if this is correct or not. Ensure that all stakeholders can easily review district and board policies online with an option for feedback. And this should include a plan for both district and the board on how they will implement parent and community engagement. Danielle is also wanting accountability, parent involvement, and community partnerships, which fits in basically with what I was talking about. And the last one is return to real education. We are graduating students that must take remedial classes in college because they didn't learn what they needed to in our district. Students should not know the personal political beliefs of teachers or other employees. The teachers need to be teaching only what they're supposed to be teaching. A parent said, "Make education a priority, rigor in the classroom, and discipline for students who are constant distraction from the learning. Ditch the political agenda and focus on the basics." That's it.
Thank you. Director Avila.
Thank you, Chair Carson Conham. I'd like to bring up specifically a couple policies that we'd like to work on. And that would be the expulsion policy INS P029. I believe that if we can review this policy, that we can create fair and equitable practices for all students. That can also help minimize the disproportionate expulsions.
Could you repeat the policy number? I wanted to write it down, please.
Yeah, INS P029. So, help minimize disproportionate expulsions among specific race and ethnicity demographics. So, hopefully, that will also address some of the topics that Director Hyun brought up. I believe that if we can embed new approaches, procedures as deemed appropriate with appropriate interventions, and consequences for students, that creates restorative and growth mindset with accountability measures and making sure that the consequence is relevant to the action. So, trying to keep our students more engaged and then not being pushed away. I believe we can do this through by creating teams that can review and bring forward recommendations for the full board. Also reviewed and get input by district staff, students, community engagement. My second one would be the R2, Academic Achievement Policy. Just take a look at it. It's been a while since it's been updated, a couple of years, I believe. I think 17, 18 might be the last time. Now, we need to review this policy, identify new gaps within the policy that can bolster achievement for all students using disaggregated data as well. Again, same thing, embed new approaches, procedures through curriculum, through engagement opportunities, honors courses, A B I B, C T E pathways. So, let's create students to pursue the different educational pathways with challenging rigorous academic success. Again, create a team that can review and bring forward the recommendations for full board review by district staff, students, community engagement as well. And the last one, which there's been some discussion about a climate justice resolution that I would like to bring forward. We'll have the district make a commitment to address climate change through practical and cost-effective changes that will diminish its carbon footprint. And also create mindset among students, staff, and community to participate in addressing climate change. It's a everybody problem, not just big companies. We can embed new approaches and procedures that address the minimization of the climate impact in our waste, find renewable energy, recycling, et cetera, lowered energy consumption and savings for the district. Again, we can bring it forward, review it, make edits, what's doable, and get feedback from community and district and staff as well, students and staff. So, those are my three to start off with.
Thank you so much. Others? Director Shandra Giri.
Well, thank you very much. And thank you, Director Avila, because you brought up some good points, and there is a lot of alignment with what I wanted to share. The top priority for me would be school safety and a positive school climate as a topic. You know, school safety is a community safety. And we have seen examples all over in our nation and for us also. When school safety is breached, it has serious impact on students, families, community, schools, and cost is very high. Our students become alienated.
Director Shandra Giri, sorry, we can't hear because of the fan and the thing, so I'm just interrupting. Yeah, we can't hear well.
And just also know, I had a hard time hearing Director Avila too.
I did, yep.
Because between the mask and the echoes and everything, it's really hard. I picked up a piece or two.
They're gonna work... No, it's another fan maybe if we turned off.
Can you hear me now? All right. You know, thank you, Director Avila. You, I mean, I see a lot of alignment with some of the topics that I wanted to bring it up. The top priority for me would be focusing on school safety and creating a positive school climate. Because I believe this is, school safety is community safety. And when school safety is breached, it has serious impact on our students, families, community, schools, and cost is very, very high. We all seen it all over the nation and in our communities also. Our students become alienated. The sense of engagement or belonging decreases. Their connectedness decreases, and they are at risk for educational, economic, social problems, and leads to disproportionate discipline rates, absentism, and unfortunately, contact with juvenile justice system, expulsion, suspensions, discipline problems, suicide, and poor educational outcome. When school is safe and positive school climate is there, it leads to improved sense of belonging and connectedness, and leads to positive thriving life trajectory. We can become a trauma-informed school and community. I believe this should be a multi-year project and an ongoing focus. We should not change the focus at all. It'll kind of ebb and flow. We need to dig deeper into the data, both real-time and historical. Try to understand the roots of the disciplinary disparities and deal with serious upstream risk factors and red flags sooner and why the disparities exist in discipline outcomes. That should guide creating the action plan or policy changes. So, the policy change should be directed by what we are seeing in the data and trying to dig deeper into the root cause, not just at the symptom level. And how the root cause will be addressed, implemented, and most importantly, monitored on a continuous basis so that we can keep improving and making our school system better. It requires a team approach to tackle tough conversation across different perspectives. In year, at least in the next one year, let's establish a team to start using data-driven improvement team. As a board, we can participate. We can look at our own historical and the last 12 months' real-time data. We can review the literature and best practices, whatever is practiced in our nation and other places. And good work has been done. We can invite different families, students, stakeholders, and subject matter experts. It's really critical to hear from different perspectives. It's really important because safety is very important for all parents, all families, all children. The board, district, families, students, and subject matters expert can create a standing committee and address this. There has to be a public-facing dashboard, data dashboard, so that the data which truly belongs to the community, belongs to our children. We are only custodians of it, so that the community can understand what this means. What does an expulsion or absenteeism in elementary school means for the trajectory? What are the upstream factors so that people know what to look for and how to ask for help? If we don't, it's like everybody is seeing it, yet we don't see it, and we miss the red flags and upstream factors. And tragically, bad outcome happens, whether it is anywhere in the world. So, it's, in schools, become a very important place. So, we have to authentically engage all sections of community. We have to teach them how to understand what it means. Just like we have a road to health card for all parents. When their children are born, we need to also help them understand what this data means and also make sure this is available in an easily accessible and understandable manner so that they can get help for their children or together we can work. For this, we need three pieces. We need the schools, we need the children, and we also need authentic relationship with different sections of community. All three stakeholders have to come together, along with other community stakeholders in order to do that. If a child is expelled or child does not show up in school, that's a very high-risk factor. Why? Because nobody is observing them. So, I really agree with Director Avila when he mentioned that we really have to drill down and understand the expulsion policy. It's better that there is an oversight either in one of the systems rather than a child is stopped coming to school. The second important reason, once we can take care of that, which should go along with that, the second important goal should be well-rounded, high-quality learning and closing the academic achievement gap. In this modern day, children should really be prepared for the real world, global world. And for that, I think not only we should be satisfied with closing the learning loss, which unfortunately, with all that we have gone through, but we also have to reimagine what a high-quality education and get our focus back on high-quality education standards. I agree with Director Avila when he said we need to get some of those high-quality education, honors courses, AP courses back. But also specifically, I would like to focus on STEM education because that is the future. That's the cutting edge. Anything else, there are challenges. CTEC is a good model, which I believe is a very good model of, you know, project-based learning. The graduation rate, work, preparing people for real-world work and jobs of the future, and also post-secondary education. One way to know if we are doing a good job is to reduce the remediation course enrollment in our colleges. That'll give a good idea if the kids are learning in school what they should be. I believe we need to bring back AP, IB, honors, dual-learning immersion as a standard, and then try to get everybody else using equity lens to prepare for that. This is also going to be a multi-year project. In the year one, I would like to see a real, authentic family engagement, creating a standing committee consisting of families, students, educators, stakeholders, private sectors, businesses, and also board members. Let's review our own historic and ongoing data monitoring, and let's have open curriculum access where people can really know what is being taught versus what should be taught, and they can also participate. If the family is not able to help, maybe somebody in the neighborhood can. Or we can create mentorship and tutoring or additional support in the community so that every child is connected with somebody. Educational materials access is very important. It's not enough if they just have it in schools. There are accepted equity indicators for every grade level from K to 12. We need to use equity indicators using some of the data we are supposed to collect as part of civil rights data collection, federally mandated, state-mandated. And we can start there and see if we are closing the outcomes for different groups or different vulnerable communities. We need to use a data-driven goal setting. It has to be measurable, smart goals. It's not enough to say we will improve the graduation or children will do better. That's an open-ended one. Then, we need to have some key measures which can be reported in the school board meeting so that the public can hold our board and the district accountable. There has to be a publicly facing, easily accessible data dashboard. Parents need to know right from kindergarten what to expect at each grade level, and are their kids reaching that? If not, what extra mentoring and tutoring can be available in order to get them back on track? And the third important priority is, we need authentic family engagement. I attended this OSBA conference, and our Chair Avila also was there, and we all got a very nice book from Dr. Stephen Constantinoff. I like his vision. He shared what he called it, every family, every teacher, every child, every day. It's simple, but it really makes sense. Because every child, for every family, the child is very precious. They want the child to do well, succeed, be safe, and have upward social mobility. We have to change the culture that authentically engages family. There is total transparency and inclusion and diversity of different perspectives. Engage family to co-create and involved in decision-making. We cannot be engaging family in a reactive manner. I had shared this observation with our superintendent. The title one, of course, requires us to engage some family, but we need to use the same standard for engaging all families. Again, this can also be data-driven planning. Outcomes, accountability, and reporting can be used as a way to see if we are doing this kind of authentic engagement, not just restricting to compliance, but authentically, we are engaging different communities. There has to be specific, measurable, attainable results so that family knows that they have been involved. Let there be good, transparent, informational website. We have done a good job when SIA process was there. I know we can. We have the ability to really engage, and we are like the benchmark the rest of the school districts are using. So, I think by having a system, by asking ourselves, who is missing in our committees? Who is missing in the table? And then start intentionally looking for different communities. We can create this vision. Each committee should ask, who is missing? We have different communities. We have close to 110 communities in this town. So, we need to find different ways to go and authentically listen. I was there in the Thalman Neighborhood Family Gathering. I spent three hours. I got far more information by spending in that big North Gate Park, listening to different communities and their hopes and aspiration. Then, I would have heard in the public meeting session, sorry, public comment alone. So, we need to create infrastructure where we go to the different communities and authentically spend time and listen so that we can overcome the... So that we can overcome the trust deficit, so that we can really start working on common goals and making a difference in our children. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Director Shonda Gary. Yeah, our monitor went off again. Is there anything we could? The vast, we could hear most of it, yeah, till the very, very end, it went off. Test, test, test. Is that better? Okay, Student Advisor Ray Lynn.
So if I'm under correct assumption, this is what we think we should focus on for like this year, right? Okay. I definitely know that a bunch of students are unhappy with the quality of food that we are being served during lunch. So I think that that would be one thing that the school board should focus on. But then also making our food more sustainable and more equitable. Because people who have food restrictions, it's really hard for them to get food within our schools. And another thing that I think we should focus on is equitable grading. It's really hard for neurodivergent students, if they fall behind in classes, to catch up. And one other thing I think we should focus on is creating real world opportunities for students, like Director Shonda Gary said. But I would say that focusing that in classes or a class that teaches students how to do real world things such as write checks, write checks. Or create a resume that we may not necessarily learn from our parents because of different situations and different reasons. And so not all, all students necessarily know how to do things like do laundry. Or cook a basic three square meal. And so I think that we should do that.
Thank you very much, very helpful. Director Guzman Ortiz.
Thank you. So just to kind of brainstorming, one priority, and I understand that we're going to kind of go through a process and see what, what we prioritize. But just thinking about our policies and having discussed revisions to these, just looking at the possibility of establishing a policy committee. Whether that would be under the purview of the superintendent or the board. In terms of length of time, I can, you know, might depend one to two years depending on the pace of that. But prioritizing some of the board policies, including monitoring superintendent, for example, equity policy, results, policies, all of these. But, but the purpose of having it be a policy committee would be the opportunity to also include community, parents, educators, students. In the revision of these policies so that they can best encompass the desires and the needs of all of our constituencies. As part of that policy revision, one that stands out to me and that I was kind of mulling over was the equity policy. And considering how we can revise and align this with the findings of the equity audit from 2021. Some of those included, some of the priorities identified in the audit, including addressing deficit thinking in the district. Accepting and confirming BIPOC and marginalized student voices. And increasing culturally responsive school leadership teaching and curriculum. So thinking about how can we embed those suggestions, those findings into something that is results driven for us? And that we can also measure and look back as a board and say, what is our process? Like what has been our input in some of this? And are we reach, are we aiming to reach some of these goals as a district, but also as a board? So with that, it would just be more aligning the policies of the vision of how to approach the equity practices. Again, measurable outcomes. And the outcome of this overall would be to an improved sense of safety for students. And a strength spaced and growth mindset and administration, educators and children and students. And thirdly, well, if I may, I have four. Third would be to continue to support and find pathways to increase mental health and behavioral supports in schools. A long term goal that I would like to voice would be to have social workers or mental health professionals and case management at each school. I know that we have as a school, you know, middle school and high schools, but thinking about also extending that to all elementary schools. Considering that a wraparound approach across the district and that each school would be the best support, one of the ways to best support students. In a way that is also relationship centered. And to do this, you know, we definitely need to prioritize and continue investing funds in, in these areas. Also advocating, I think, at a wider level, right? When we think about state funding and making that sustainable. And also supporting our mental health professionals, along with all other professionals in our schools. Because we understand that burnout is real and that providing supports for our educators and support staff will aid in the retention of staff. And therefore better relationships and better outcomes. And I think tied to that is just the continuous work on suspension and expulsion, especially for me, a focus in our younger grades. When it comes to K through five, how can we reduce the expulsion and the suspension rates? I know that we are doing work when it comes to our early learning and kind of putting a ban on suspension and expulsion. And really limiting exclusionary practices for young children. And I'd love to see us extend that through the K through five system at, at the least. And I think it's an opportunity for us to be innovative and for us to be really just responsive to the needs of our community, our students and families. And that definitely goes tight in with the mental health piece. So just kind of wanted to throw it in there and voice it.
Thank you so much. First Vice Chair, you know, host, Pressy.
I've just been kind of taking it all in. I don't think, I don't feel like I have much to add. And I, I really do appreciate Garina uplifting like a policies committee. Cause that's, that's where I've been is really being able to under, like for us to understand the expectations of the work that we have to do. Taking time to dive into like the board governance policies. Because we do say that we'll reflect upon them annually and, you know, have like a true assessment of if we're living up to those policies. And how, if they need to be updated and things like that. Like my head is definitely on how we're governing. And my thought on how we could reflect on that is both like, you know, taking time either to review a policy like once a month or something. Cause I know that there's definitely like quite a few board governance policies. Or even just reserving like 15 minutes at the end of the meeting where we can just have some sort of like anonymous reflection. That we could all fill in on like what we did well, what we need to work on. And then we can just like bring it back and highlight it at the next meeting. So we're always keeping ourselves accountable and thinking on how we can govern better.
Great, thank you. So a lot of the things that I had written down, others have already covered. So it sounds like there's a lot of alignment already on the topics and ideas that we want to tackle for this school year. Things that I can add on, I definitely want to implement some parent, student, community listening sessions. Which I think builds on a number of the things that my fellow directors have, have raised. Where we have an opportunity just to listen to parents, students, where we don't really have any other agenda items for that evening. In a really accessible space, maybe one of the high school auditoriums where we can accommodate a lot of people showing up. And then maybe have some online too, if that's more accessible for some parents. I'd like to involve childcare, maybe food if we can. But make it a welcoming space so that we can really have a good listening session on people's true experiences. For their kids or themselves in our schools, which will help better inform, I think, revision of policy. As we take up some of these other ideas around a policy committee and other policies. So I'm really interested also in exploration of school based health centers. This is something that we don't have in Salem Kaiser Public Schools. I'm always focused on health equity and making sure that our students have access to a full range of healthcare and mental health supports. And I know that school based health centers have been a really wonderful option in lots of places across the country. To make sure that basic health needs are met when you already know the student is going to be at school every day, all day. And so that would probably be a multi-year exploration and project. But I would like to, to begin to do that for health equity for Salem Kaiser Schools. I'm interested in doing a little bit more of a deep dive to ensure our students with disabilities, that all of their needs are met. There's been some media around this and I know that in general, our school district has been doing fairly well. But I think this is something our board hasn't focused a whole lot on. And it would be nice to get into the weeds more to make sure all of our students are getting the learning time they need, the classroom time. And that their needs are being met. Let's see. I feel like almost everything else I wrote down has been spoken about already, so I won't repeat. But I would love to give Director Hyun time again, since we really couldn't hear you very well. Would you mind doing yours again so that we can, then we can launch into more discussion or questions about each other's priorities? Would that be okay? Thank you.
Sure, I love to read over and over and over. That's okay. So there's three kind of section areas. I had reached, we got this assignment Sunday night and I reached out to the community that I follow. And to see what they were wanting the district to do. Return SROs. And as I stated before, this has been requested to be on the agenda. Hold all, all students accountable for their actions. A few students make it impossible for many to learn. Reduce violence in schools. One parent said, district policy that a parent cannot bring up something, an event involving their child to a parent is very wrong. How can someone address a problem if they are unaware of it? The adversarial attitude of the district towards parents and community needs to change. In fact, it must stop. And when, when it comes to the policy, I'm not sure which policy they're referring to. I'm just telling you what they said. Danielle, who I'm also speaking for tonight, Director Bethel, is also wanting SROs and student advisor management, which fits in with what I had stated. The second section is transparency and inclusion. When it comes to things where the district involves the community, make sure that this includes all community and not just special interest groups. Many parents are feeling left out. This would include book selection and policies like the transgender bathroom policy. Certainly fits in with the policy committee kind of idea that I heard. Let's see. Such as establishing a community and parent book review task force to complete a full review and assessment of all library books. With recommendation to be presented to the board for review and approval. Ensure that all stakeholders, that's parents and taxpayers, have the ability to easily review all curriculum and give feedback. They need to be able to review well ahead of it before it's going to be taught in the classroom. I heard that Wes Lynn may have done this already, but I have not had an opportunity to find out if that's correct. Ensure that all stakeholders can easily review board and district policies and offer an option for online feedback on those policies. This should include a plan for both the district and the board on how they will implement parent and community engagement. Danielle is also wanting accountability, parent involvement and community partnerships, which fits in with what I was talking about. And the third is return to real education. We are graduating students that must take remedial classes in college because they didn't learn what they needed in our district. Students should not know the personal political beliefs of teachers or other employees. They need to be teaching only their own topic. Unfortunately, during COVID, we saw this was not the case. A parent said, make education a priority, rigor in the classroom and discipline for students who are a constant distraction from learning. Ditch the political agenda and focus on basics.
Okay, thank you. All right. Does anyone have any other ideas that they didn't get to share? Director Shonda Gary.
While we are discussing this, I just want to clarify something. You know, the way our board is designed, we are a policy governance board. So I find it will be helpful for us to stick to a goal, a bigger goal. And try to separate the operational part from the and the goal of the board. Otherwise, we will be getting ourselves into the operational part of the policy or the weeds of it. So, so I'll give you a specific example. So an example of a board goal could be, we want our children safe. Now, we, by we will delegate it to the district superintendent saying through an executive limitation and say, superintendent, it's almost like hire a main contractor to kind of build your home. And the main contractor will have subcontractors to take care of electricity, water, et cetera. And at every stage, they'll keep coming and reporting to the board. And then you inspect and make sure it met the specification within the budget, et cetera. And then you report back, we have achieved. So having that approach would really help. So then we talk about safety and you say we outsource it using an executive limitation. But make sure that we have an informed oversight. So that's what we mean by every month we report some key factors. Otherwise, what will happen is we will find ourselves getting involved in the operational part of the policy. Then we will have to assume the responsibility of running that part. So we really want to make sure that part is very clearly separated. Suppose it is an academic achievement, then we'll say we want 90% of our students getting into AP classes or IB classes. From different groups. Or we want 100% attendance. We will be willing to accept a 10% tolerance. So what is our baseline, we'll kind of go up to 100%. It has to be that way. And then this district will say, okay, we are going to have hire people who will go to the community or have a billboard saying, show up in school or whatever it is. As long as it is within the law and within the budget. Otherwise, I'll, we will find ourselves overlapping and we made that mistake. To be honest, we found ourselves not able to distinguish that in the midst of everything that was going on in the community. Several of the leaders who are sitting here, Mr. Decaplas also helped me understand. So when we're coming back to this topic, I heard three different topics, but they are all important. Just because we have delegated, it does not mean the board is not responsible. At the end of the day, the board is responsible. So we really want to take that kind of ownership. Yet we have to find a way to define our goal, delegate it and make sure it is achievable, measurable, clearly defined thing. Second piece to this observation is in the past, most of our policy, including result policy, did not have measurable goal. It would say that graduation will improve or, you know, people will get better or something like that. That I feel having, leaving it open ended allowed us no way to hold anybody accountable, including ourselves. So will graduation improve to how much with respect to what? What's the baseline we want to measure? Then it becomes a Then it becomes a very emotional rhetoric rather than clearly understandable. The third thing is, we have to start getting into the habit of using data-driven so that we can remove the implicit biases that we all bring to the table. Or we don't want to use, you know, confirmation bias, see, look, I said this, I said that. So we really want to use both historical and real time so that we can look at real trend, and the community will begin to trust us. Otherwise, it will be very emotional topics with nothing to show. And in the end, lot of children and the families are felt left out. So those are the three asks as we explore, dig deeper into this.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the, yeah, just one second. So absolutely, so there's a lot of ideas that we're talking about right now. That's not the the operational plan or strategy of how we get there. So yes, there's a lot more and deeper work that we have to do once these ideas are floated. But I can also, we can, we can move now into a little bit more about that, because I think some of us shared the ideas with the why, why we need this, but some of us just shared the idea. And so I would love if everyone will come along with me, you know, if we're saying things like, I'll just use the first one that many of you said. If we want to have parent and student community listening sessions, which I don't know if everyone exactly said that or wants that, you know, why do I think it's important? I think it's critical because I want to hear from a broad swath of the community about their experiences in our schools. I don't think a board meeting during the public comment section is the best way to hear about the firsthand experiences of kids and the opinions of parents. So what does success look like for me if we're able to achieve pulling off having regulars, let's say quarterly, parent-student listening sessions? We would have three to four of them in the next 12 months. We would have childcare available, and that more of the community that we have not yet heard from in my time on the board has the opportunity to engage with the board and the district. Then the process of how we would get there, again, I think takes a lot greater detail, but for the purpose of brainstorming tonight, I'd propose that we work with the superintendent and her team to plan the sessions, get them on the calendar, be really clear that our sole purpose is to listen, and that we hold them at one of our large high school auditoriums, that we work with whomever she delegates to make sure the invitations go out broadly, you know, to everyone across the district so that we have a lot of people show up to talk with us. So that's kind of the the model that I would love to go through in a little greater detail on some of these awesome ideas that have been shared, like if we can keep fleshing out a little bit, like I want to know some of the why, like Director Avila, could you dive in, and you did a little bit, but could you dive in a little bit more on why you want to tackle that, the expulsion or discipline policy revision?
The why is because we kind of, well, everybody's already shared a little bit. Leading to remedial education in community colleges is a big reason why students blame K through 12 education, the the lack of preparedness. But that's not the only reason, so I'd like to stay away from saying that we are not educating our students and being then having to take remedial education. It's, it's, that's a case that's been pondered for generations. So let's make that clear. The district is not responsible for that to an extent. There's multiple factors going into that situation, and me being a product of remedial education myself. However, but I do think that when we, when we are losing students that no longer are district students due to being expelled, expulsion practices that go through that entire process through their lifetime or through that they experience in school, whether that's teachers who have given up on them, administrators who, who have the best intentions, as well as the educators, that have to carry down expulsion consequences to the students. It drives students away. It drives families away. It separates the families from the school. There's no more trust. We want to keep all our students engaged, along with the families. We want to keep them in school, but we also need to teach them consequences, right? Every action has a consequence. We have high rate numbers, disproportionate numbers among our black and brown students and native students. We need to find out why. What's the process of the expulsion policies? Are each, is each case being handled fairly inequitable? You know, you've all seen the data. We've all heard the data, and it's, it's time that we work on that so we, our student achievement gaps are closed, our students stay engaged, and that they're better prepared for the real world, like we state in our mission for the district. So there's a lot of details to go into it, and I think it does resonate with what I've heard all the other directors share. And another, and I know, and I'll just, I'll support the the policy committee. It's another session that I attended at the OSBA conference. I know we can get, if we want to push forward for that, we can get some guidance through OSBA to really establish like who the, who really should be there? How does that work? How's best practices for a policy committee? I would recommend that.
And what are your initial thoughts on how we collectively overhaul the expulsion policy? You don't have to know the whole process, but just kind of what, off the top of your head, what do you think the direction you'd like to go is?
Like Director Hyun said, we got this project on Sunday evening, so I got to look at it today.
Yeah, no worries. It's just supposed to be, it's okay if if people don't have answers, like nothing wrong with that, just.
Well, we really need to just really look at it. I mean, just glancing over it and trying to understand the expulsion rates and how that's tied to it, you know? Obviously, it's something designed in our policy that we need to review, that, and then provide that guidance to the district, to the superintendent, to, and then change practice. Would that mean more culturally competencies or culturally relevant practices in education and handing out the consequences, understanding backgrounds? I think there's a lot to it.
Thank you so much. Director Hyun?
Thank you. I had one thing, now I have three. Every time I hear somebody talk, I get, oh, yes, oh, yes. So the freshest one is is expulsions, and I certainly don't know the process, you know, really well, because it's really a district thing, you know? It comes to us as an appeal. But I would recommend to the district that they take a holistic approach, since there seems to be certain groups that are having more challenges. Take a look at the whole, the whole picture for that student, the family, the culture. How does all of that play into where they are? And is there something that we can do to help, you know, the situation? Oh, yeah, I think all of us said something about wanting parents in community to be more involved, because they want to be more involved. And I like the listening sessions, but I hope we can come up, I don't have any other ideas, but I hope we can come up with more than just that, because that's not going to work, you know, obviously, for everybody. And the third thing that Satya made me think about was the results policy. Having, this is my eighth year on this board. The results policy, 50% of it is meaningless. We can't even use it. It's for, I don't know how many years ago. And the other result policy doesn't really give us a very good picture. We need a whole new results policy with some real things that we can measure, and also maybe some things you can't measure, but just impressions and stuff so that the superintendent kind of understands where we're coming from issues. You know, maybe it's something you can't measure with numbers, but it's a sense of the community that you're hearing, where there's issues and whatever. And so an opportunity for the board to give true feedback to the superintendent and not just the ELS and the results policy, I think is critical. We've talked about this as long as I can remember, and there was always some reason we couldn't change it. You know, I don't know if it was timing or contracts or what. There was always some reason, but I think this is critical. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hyun. Director Shonda Gary?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Director Avila, for explaining the expulsion. I feel when a child is suspended or expelled, it's like taking a bird out of the nest and putting it back. It's going to be very difficult. The earlier the suspension and expulsion, it is far more detrimental for the child. It sets the child on a trajectory of future expulsion suspensions, getting out of the school system, or getting into trouble with all kinds of criminogenic behaviors, and what often people have talked about school-to-prison pathway. The second thing is, once a child is suspended or expelled, there is nobody to, there's no oversight. Before, at least the schoolteachers could have noted something and alerted the red flags, now it's gone. So that is actually a very high-risk scenario. Academically also, it starts affecting, whether it's math grade or subsequent grade, and there's a good chance that it will harm their ability to graduate. And so it really adds to a cascading of events. To me, the suspension and expulsion is very important because it is not the problem, it is a symptom of the problem, and the symptoms of a problem that is underneath what we would call structural problem. It could come from the policy, or it could come from the way we are implementing it, or not able to understand how the child is expressing their suffering, and then somebody misunderstands, whether it's a language barrier, a culturally thing. So there are multiple reasons where that somebody may miss. And then what happens is, often those early indicators are lost, and then it reaches this high level, and then it leads to cascade of events. Sometimes even parents don't know what to do, what are the civil rights that is duly accorded for them, how to appeal, what does this mean, how do they remedy this? Does the child need mental health counseling? Does the child need addiction treatment? Does the child need anger management? Or is the challenges happening in the school, or the child is getting bullied? Pretty much all the high-risk situations that we have heard nationally and locally, there are precursors, including suspensions and expulsions and school absentism. So to me, there goes as a cluster of things. So it's like looking at your dashboard. There's more than one thing go together, suspension, expulsion, the low grades, school absentism, or the child being bullied, or he's a bully. So it's, I don't want to look at it as simply consequences, and here is the behavior. You have to really start looking at it. The second thing is, we don't have a system of tracking from the early get-go. So every time the child shows up in a new class, probably there is some cursory information flows from one class to another class, but there is no way for the next class to build on that. If the parents are also involved, and if the parents come to know that early on, suspension means this, I'm sure every parent is going to get alert and do everything they can to make sure the kid is back on the right trajectory. So there are a lot of missed opportunities in my mind. By the time it reaches suspension and expulsion, it's the tip of the iceberg. There's so much of missed opportunity right from get-go, which we can really go up. I mean, ideally, I would like to see zero vision, just like in an airplane. You don't want the plane crashing. Two, you want to pick it up before the plane takes off. We need to develop a system that, a policy that is designed around zero vision, so that we can really start thinking, what do we tackle? Do we tackle implicit bias training? Or do we change the policy? Or is it the application of policy, or the parents didn't understand, the child didn't have different vocabulary to express? Is the child a special needs child or special education child?
Director Shonda Gary.
So these are, it's a complex issue, and I wouldn't.
Director Shonda, can I ask you a question? So what, what would you tackle first?
I would, rather than directly tackling, as a board, I would ask for a standing group which will work on this. They will take a look at the data, they will try to get real input from different parents, families, educators, and try to understand what is going on, and then try to look at the historical data, baseline data, different ethnic groups, or different vulnerable communities, and then start drilling down, then start asking question. Is it a policy-related, or is it implementation? Is it accountability? Is it a training issue? Is it a cultural issue? So that's how I would understand what is going on, and based on that, I will make revision, rather than making one revision and applying it to everybody, and then it may not work for everyone. So that's how I would. The second thing, the same committee will start working on a, like a quality improvement method, keep working on revising it. We can't write a policy and leave it for next 10 years. We have to constantly update it based on the data that's coming, and then start measuring if we are going towards zero. So that's how I would shape the thing. It's not like a one-time affair and then be done with it. It is going to require ongoing data, policy change, because we cannot make policy change without knowing what exactly is the deep understanding of the issue. Otherwise, it doesn't work. It's like diagnosing the condition before you write your prescription. You don't write a prescription and then like a shotgun approach to everybody. So that's how I would approach it. For that, board has to be involved, community has to be involved, educators are absolutely necessary, and together, we need to work on this. Bring some subject matter experts, bring some community stakeholders who are involved peripherally on this. Look at our syst, baseline systems before we start tinkering with changes. That's how I would approach.
Great, thank you. Other questions for each other? Ray Lynn?
Director Hyun, previously, you noted that in your second time talking, that there would be more student advisor management. What did you mean by that?
I'm not sure what you're speaking to.
I wrote that down too and had a question. I think you said it towards the bottom of the, your notes. I think after Danielle might have mentioned, and Director Bethel might have said it.
I can show you my notes, and you could tell me where your question is.
You said, yeah, it was student advisor management was the topic.
Oh, that was Danielle's.
Okay.
And it was student behavior management. And since I'm now talking to our student advisor that's here, I agree probably with the food, but I didn't catch the second item that you had mentioned.
The second item I mentioned was equitable grading.
Ray Lynn, would you be able to tell us a little more about that? So you mentioned when a student gets behind, it's hard to get caught back up. Can you give us a little more?
So this is actually an idea that originated from my vice principal at Sprague, Mark Harris, and it's the way that grades are typically weighted. When students get behind because of burnout or other reasons, that once they get behind a little too much, it's really hard for them to catch up, no matter how hard they work. There are times where, you know, a student will go from failing class to the highest that they can get as a C. And it really discouraged students for trying to maintain a good GPA. If they had different situations, again, burnout or depression, it's really hard for them to catch back up. And so equitable grading would be changing the way. And so equitable grading would be changing the way that we weight grades, so that way it makes it easier for students who have fallen behind to be able to catch back up.
Thank you, that's really helpful. Other questions? This is our time to discuss and get more detail and... Nope. You look like you wanted to talk.
Yeah, I think I was just thinking, I'd just like to see us move forward and like finding, you know, what are some of those common goals that we have? And I know that that's kind of the direction that we're headed. I feel a sense of frustration at wanting to just look at, like, just thinking about data because we've all sat here, and we've all listened, and it feels like a way of just, it feels like it's inevitably going to slow things down. And I was really reassured to hear some of the, several of the ideas shared tonight. Another that I did want to kind of share, and I know that we've gotten reports from superintendent and staff regarding kind of like our Grow Your Own programs for educators within the district, but how can we support that or kind of embed that also as a policy, as a board goal? Thinking in the long-term impacts of, you know, supporting students to become educators, supporting support staff to become licensed professionals, and even administration? And how can we diversify our administration and really have administration and educators that reflect and that come from our community? We have a very large district, and I think that we just have so much potential. I know the district superintendent Perry have been working really hard on this, but how can we also embed that into some of our board goals is just a thought there. And I know that there's statewide initiatives as well on this, from, you know, TSPC, COSA, and others. Just wanted to add that one into the bunch.
Great, thank you. Director Shonda Gary?
Second vice chair, thank you for bringing that very important point of creating pipelines. The way I would like to conceptualize this is to start thinking in terms of cradle-to-career pipelines, and really start understanding. For example, in 1999, 4% of students who, from African-American black families, who graduated engineering school. So in 2021, again, it's 4%. For example, there are six students in AP IB classes in 2011 in our Salem Kaiser district. In 2021, again, six students in AP IB classes from African-American community. So I really agree with you. We need to start intentionally creating cradle-to-career pipelines, and start asking ourselves, how do we intentionally develop, either it's a mentoring, or sponsorship, or extra help, so that we start, really start closing the equity gaps right from the get-go? Simply taking somebody and putting them in an AP class when we haven't built that pipeline becomes very, very difficult. I agree with you. Once you miss a few grades, it becomes very hard to come back. So that would be one suggestion, is to ask, are we really using the equity lens and targeting mentoring program or tutoring program? Is each, every kid connected with a mentor or a tutor? Are we really setting aside resources? Are we doing it intentionally, or are we just starting a program and say, catch those who can? And others may or may not feel comfortable being engaged. So that's one thought I'm having, is how do we intentionally develop programs? How do we intentionally engage the nonprofit groups? How do we intentionally engage different parents and other community members to say, can you please help volunteer and mentor this program? Can every child be connected to a mentoring program within the school building, after school, and invite parents and volunteers to help? Most of, you know, lots of parents and volunteers can be from different profession, real-life profession, so they can come. So we can start making it easier. We can bring down the wall, bring down the barriers for authentic engagement so that we can create the pipeline. Our future educators are going to, we are all getting older. We need to have the pipeline developing, whether it is diversified pipeline or otherwise. I truly believe we have immense potential in this community. And only thing is, we need to intentionally develop this pipeline, and start asking, is every child connected with a mentor? Or has an opportunity? Is every child connected with a tutoring opportunity after school? Can we have programs year-round, year-round school, so that there is no loss during the summer break? And those are some ways in which we, as a board, can start thinking. And then start saying, are we really closing the gap? If more children from, say, African-American families are enrolled in honors classes or AP classes as they enter high school, at least we know one key measure that we are heading in the right direction. If more families know how to start a college savings account right from the time they're in kindergarten, and they can join the avid students in college tour, then they feel comfortable in entering a university. Because a lot of immigrants, we feel, we don't know how to fill out FAFSA. We feel anxious going into campus. So these are some ways in which our board can work with the district and make sure that such programs are there. There are two other things.
Director Shonda Gary, sorry, I've gotten a request that we take a break, so hold that thought for when we come back after a break. We will recess for 10 minutes, come back at 7:27.
Thank you, Chair. So what I was referring to is to intentionally build the pipeline. Can you, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Is it better?
Yeah.
All right. What I was referring to is intentionally building the pipeline, where we really have proper accountability measures for each stage. So I'll just give you an example. We could have something like access to high-quality educational supports. That's an opportunity. And then we can start seeing that our different groups having that kind of opportunity. Rather than cutting back on the outcome, we need to keep that outcome. Just like a patient, you want the blood sugar should be normal, but then one may need a different kind of medicine, another one may need insulin. The same way, we should not dilute the opportunity. That's why we pushed hard for the dual-language immersion as a standard. If you want the person to become a teacher, we want that high standard, access to high-standard education at every appropriate grade level. If you want them to be a physician, you really need to get into that pipeline from the beginning. So that's one example of what I'm trying to say, is think of the opportunity as one way to measure the out, and then the outcome. In each group out of, say, 100 kids, are 90% able to reach that level? And if for some reason that's not happening, rather than bringing down the accountability, we boost more of mentoring and tutoring and after-school program as a way to enhance it. Never cut down the outcome and accountability of a system. Because then it becomes harder when they go to the next grade and the subsequent grade. And we can never build a pipeline and prepare these kids for the real-world challenges of becoming, say, a superintendent of a school district, or a science teacher in our school system, or a physician or engineering. So that way, we cannot completely close the equity gap in different professions or after-school, high academics. And once we can create that kind of intentional program, so not only measure how much penetration in different programs, what percentage of children sign up on that, but also start making sure that outcome is never compromised. To me, that's a way to have an accountable system of education. Because once you start tinkering with the outcome, then we are giving a false sense of impression that everything is fine. But after K-12, we, there is no legal requirement that we have any responsibility for these children. We can't kick the can down the lane and expect these kids, when they become adults, to figure it out, how to survive in the real world. So that's my way of looking at it. Not by equity, not by out... So that's my way of looking at it. Not by equity, not by compromising the outcome, but by boosting more resources based on the need. So you create that necessary catching up and make sure that they keep climbing up. Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to bring up one other one that I failed to mention the first time around that was on my list. I think something that is a huge priority, we have the long legislative session coming up next January through June, and so educating legislators on the importance of fully funding our public schools, because we're not going to be able to continue all of the amazing things that we have done in Salem Kaiser Public Schools unless the legislature fully funds public schools. And that'll be part of the work on the Legislative Policy Committee, but that, I know First Vice Chair Ino Hocepez Pressy and I would want the involvement of the full board in getting the word out about all of the, you know, incredible things that have been done while you've been on the board, because we want to keep building on the successes around our dual-language programs and mental health supports, and we can't go backwards from here, or we will have another loss in, in learning and growth for our students, and that's just not an option. So I think that should be one of our big priorities. First Vice Chair Ino Hocepez.
I was just wondering if we could take a moment and with one of the reoccurring comments from all board directors is like safety, like improving student safety. And I was wondering if we could just take a moment and really establish a baseline of what it is that we mean. I don't know if we just want to go around the table.
Sure. I started this end.
Can you repeat the question?
Go ahead.
So, what do you mean by improving student safety?
We can just throw out. It can be like, I mean, for me, like, physical safety comes to mind. Mental safety, well-being.
Yeah, that was like, just kind of like, physical, mental. I think when, when we speak about that social-emotional safety as well, right, to be able to express one's thoughts, one's feelings, is what comes to mind. Like, it goes beyond the physical, of course, and for somebody to be able to be their true selves in the classroom, in a setting, with peers, with educators in every corner of our schools and our district.
Director Hyan.
So for many of our educators and our students and parents, returning SROs to the school would help with the physical safety. Many of them do not feel safe. And working on reducing the violence in schools, we've seen the videos of school fights. What leads up to this? Is there bullying going on? I've heard so many things, even my son was bullied. And it was never dealt with. You know, bullying can lead to so many bad actions. And so, really, really working on the bullying issue so that kids feel safe. And I think if we could work on that, maybe there'd be fewer disruptions, so that teachers could actually teach and students could actually learn.
Director Shondra Giri.
Yeah. You know, safety is not just one small definition. We kind of look at it. We have to think of physically safe, emotionally safe, and they are feeling that they don't have to constantly look in the back and, or sometimes when they feel scared, they can't focus on the classroom. Teachers are constantly on the high alert, and that's not the way to sit and learn anything. Because there's no learning occurring when the person is in such a hyper vigilant, constantly looking around, not feeling safe in the parking lot, all the time looking across, who is going to pick on them. Safety goes very closely with a sense of belonging. Because once the child doesn't feel safe, then the child does not feel comfortable in that place. So the child may feel scared to speak up, ask a question, or ask a follow-up question to learn. Sometimes it shows in the form of not showing up. So there can be, it can look like they are not coming to class, or they may avoid class. They may be scared to go to the bathroom and even use the classroom or the corridors of the classrooms. It can take many different forms. Rather than we deciding what is safe, we have to always ask the child and the teacher and the educators, what is your idea of safety? So that's number one, rather than we assuming. The second thing is, how do we measure it may not be very precise, but it's going to take more than one data point for us to collectively make a sense. Is this school climate that supports safety? It's not truly an individual experience, but it's a collective way of saying, okay, this appears to be a safe place. It's not precise. It's like your dashboard in your car telling you the engine is okay, speed is okay. So it's going to take more than one measure. It can show up, in some cases, in the form of suicide attempt. Sometimes it can be in the form of bullying incidents. Some of it gets picked up, which gets reported. But there's a lot of underground problems that's going on on a daily basis that doesn't get rise to the point of discipline. Or some child may find that they are feeling so scared in the neighborhood, like walking to school. So we really have to start by asking the child, asking the family, and then use the indirect measures, some of which we are required by the civil rights data collection and by the federal and state law to measure and report. That school is supposed to do it. So we have to really start there. Later, we can build on other measurements which can allow us to do even further digging and granular level. But let's not rely on one measure alone. It has to be a collection of measure, which is an indirect way to measure if the child or the school is a safe climate. And then we have to support it by asking the child and the family and the student or the educator and staff, how does these numbers mean to you? What's your day-to-day life experience in this classroom? It's like when you fly in a plane, we assume the TSA keeps everything clear of problems so that we can enjoy our flight. Teachers should not be worried about safety. Teachers should be worried about teaching in a safe place. We need to make sure that everybody understands what is to be done and what's not to be done. What does the policy say? What, what are you allowed to bring to school? What are you not allowed to bring to school? So that teacher and students can just do the learning experience without being hyper vigilant or zoning out or constantly looking at the back. That's how I would like to see. So that's my idea of safety.
Thank you. Director Avila.
I think student safety, to me, means that, you know, the students are there to, to, you know, freely learning, engaging activities, conversations, building relationships with their teachers and their peers. Teachers can also be assured that their safety is prioritized as well, and you'd hope that, you know, when students do have an outlash, that they do have the right type of support, like a some of our security specialists, which, again, apologize, forgot the new title. But that doesn't require an SRO. An SRO does more vigilant, vigilant and eavesdropping, kind of like when you're going to a, to a store and you have their security walking around and watching, making sure you're, you're not going to steal any, anything. When students feel that they have constant eyes on them, that's what I think disrupts their learning and disengages the student. Know that their mental health is, is prioritized as well, and that students are being served, that our students with disabilities, that their IEP and five-four plans are being respected and, and being accommodated so that they feel safe and welcome into the learning environment as well. So for me, yeah, I would like to see more supports in that manner that can help to the fighting takes that we've, we've seen. But even putting in practices for socialization, teaching opportunities for our students to reengage in this society, to become civil. And I know COVID has a big impact on, on that. You know, we asked fourth graders to become sixth, seventh graders without two years of interaction with their peers. And that's a big growth challenge for our students, right? For anybody in any setting. So I, I do have the trust and faith that our students' behaviors will start going down, and that will help and support our teachers and our educators across the district and, and the physical buildings.
Thank you. Raylin, would you like to weigh in?
Well, does that work? Okay. I'm gonna say that that works. Make sure that the mic can hear me, though. So, okay. Feel like I can't. So I think that most of the directors kind of divulged into, rather than aspects of safety, more of what they would want to see as a result of safety. And I think that safety is when there's, there isn't fear or that the, the fear is significantly mitigated, which has many aspects and many facets to it. And there is going to be a point where we can't mitigate that to a zero percent, which is really sad. However, what we can do for our students is try to mitigate it as much as possible and listen to our students in their issues that they are bringing up, such as the significant rise in sexual harassment in schools that students are experiencing, and again, fights. And there are constant other things that are either overlooked or just not really recognized or not given enough attention.
Thank you very much. Thanks for sharing, everyone. So,
I have a thought and then a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think just one thought in terms of safety, it's helpful to hear what everyone, how everybody understands or what safety means for everyone, because it is quite subjective. Also, just recognizing that the, you know, in our KPIs and monitoring the sense of belonging, for example, has been a way to kind of try to measure that, and all I want to say is that there, I'm, I'm a big proponent for not having to reinvent the wheel. And it's kind of saying, what do we have? What are we doing? What is working? And how can we grow and expand from that? So just really putting that out there, because I know that the district has been really working hard on this with SIE investments and others. But is, unless there's any other questions from your chair about this, I had a question about one of the things that I heard during our kind of go-around. And Director Hyan, I was just trying to understand, because I, I know you went through the list of feedback that you had from committee members, and just wanted to hear a little bit more of maybe like the how, like the why and how on the student accountability portion, like how, could, could you give some examples of how we could do that? I think it's, I was a little confused. And you mentioned student accountability in, in some of your talking points, but do you have any ideas of how we can do that?
Gee, on the spot. I haven't really thought about it clearly, since, you know, this was, like I said, we didn't have a lot of time. And, but I hear stories about, in one case, a student had done something and the principal said, well, unless they have a gun, I can't do anything about it. So there seems to be some lack of communication or understanding of what is appropriate behavior in school and how to enforce that. And, and it seems like instead of enforcing it, we're allowing it. I mean, I've heard of the sex couch at Sprague and all sorts of, I've heard of lots of things. So I, I think what we need, you know, you were talking about the students' perspective, you know, they fill in those sheets to say how they feel. They feel included and part of the community and everything. Do we do anything like that for teachers and educators? Is there some sort of anonymous way that teachers and educators can share if they feel safe? Or if they see, like the example I gave, that, I don't know that it's true. Obviously, I didn't investigate it. Somebody, some parent told me. So, you know, is there a way for them to share things? So we can find out if there's some underlying issues that the superintendent doesn't know about, because it's not, it's not filtering it the way up, right? It's being handled at a lower level, or it's just not being handled at all, and, and she's being kept in the dark. And I know, I, I really believe that does happen, Superintendent Perry, I really do. If there was some sort of very anonymous way that educators and, and staff could really tell you what's going on, I think that would be so helpful for all of us.
Superintendent Perry, would you like to respond to that?
Yeah, we do have a couple ways that we do collect anonymous trends and things through our Panorama survey, like we do for students. Also, we have a customer satisfactory factor. Satisfaction, thank you. I don't know why that was hard, survey. And then we, through COVID, we had an anonymous reporting of safety concerns in school. So we try to have a variety. I don't think we hear everything, but we do have a variety of ways.
I think it's almost maybe a step beyond, like, the COVID safety things, but to really find out, you know, if, if I'm hearing from teachers certain things or educator, or to parents, I know things get twisted around. I've, I've investigated some things and it's like, yeah, no. I know that's not true. But if, if there was maybe a more broad way that our employees, and not even related to COVID, but just to, to things that are going on. Like I heard something else, again, I don't know if it's true, is when the SROs left, there's a lot of paperwork, and we have assistant principals doing that. Right? And how does, how does that affect their ability to do probably their other job that they're assigned to do? So I just wonder if there's a way to collect that information of a broader scope. And, and we're already doing this for parents, right? So parents should have that opportunity to, to tell you about the principal that said, you gotta have a gun or we're not going to do anything, kind of situation. But we need to have that for employees, I think.
Mr. Decopoulos.
Thank you. It's, I hope to add to this conversation about safety, since I've heard you all say something about your board policies. The word safety, the word safety appears only one time in your executive limitations, and it's related to facility safety. So this has given the superintendent broad authority over facilities such as schools. So as you talk about your own concept of safety and you think ahead on looking at your policies, you should know that the, this idea of social-emotional safety, that's nowhere in the executive limitations or in your board governance policies. So these are, I think, helpful conversations for the board as you look at your policies.
Thank you. That's helpful. Raylin, I believe you were next.
Director Hyan, going back to what you said about the sex couch at Sprague, could you elaborate on that? Is it a rumor?
Fortunately, no, I cannot elaborate on that. It's just, I hear a lot of different things. It's not in Sprague, it's on the property. Is it true? I don't know. I haven't investigated it. But this is why I would hope we could have candid comments from employees who see things firsthand. firsthand, instead of me hearing things, you know, maybe second-hand, third-hand, and not really knowing exactly what's true, unless I investigate it myself. And so that, that's kind of the point of bringing that up, is just to make sure that employees can let the right people know, without any worry about repercussions, if there are things going on.
Thank you. Director Shonda Gary.
Thank you very much. As a matter of clarifying accountability, I'm a firm believer in accountability. Without accountability, any system cannot function. So part of the accountability is for us as a board, and for the district, to make it very clear to every student and the family, in a way they can understand, do's and don'ts, or what is allowed, what's not allowed. It's just like when you fly to an airport, when you fly, you know what to pack, what not to pack, it's clearly displayed. So that way, there is a feedback loop. So accountability, without accountability, no system can function. It's impossible for anybody to run an, any organization, even when your own family you cannot run. So accountability is very important. Accountability does not necessarily mean that. It just means that every action will lead to certain things. If I don't study for my homework, I, my teacher is going to give me a grade which matches mine. An accountable thing would be to give the right proportionate grade, because otherwise I'll be under a false impression that I did very well, and go and realize that in real life, I cannot use it. So accountability must be there. And part of a system-level accountability is measuring outcome. Are we investing this resource? Are these kids graduating? And are they graduating with a diploma that really measures what they are supposed to be? When you're talking of safety, it's the same way, we need to have some kind of operational definition. Granted, our EL has deficiency, but we have worked on this topic at extensive level. There are clear statutory requirements, if I can understand, or Mr. Decopoulos can elaborate, from our state, which really puts the owners on the board to ensure safety. They do use the word safety in that. I forget the OARs, I mean, I was not a lawyer, so I just forgot. Federal government also requires it. The civil rights are, laws require that we provide a level of safety, and they do insist on certain measures. When you talk about sexual assault and sexual harassment, that's a clear violation of federal civil rights of the student. So there is more than one place our education system has to answer. We depend on the federal dollar, seventy or eighty percent of our civil, Title I money comes. So we have to make sure those students are never harassed in this building, or even outside. So I don't want our community to think that we don't have a word, so we're not responsible. Sorry. We are responsible to make sure. That is an example of accountability. As a board, we need to say, did we uphold the civil rights of that student, or that child, who was sexually assaulted, or sexually harassed within, or even outside? In the world of cyber, our policy says, even if it is happening at nighttime, and if it has a potential to affect the learning ability, we are responsible. So let's not restrict, because the EL doesn't mention the word. We have still to follow the civil rights, we have to follow the federal laws, and we have to follow our state law, and it is the responsibility of the board. The way we have delegated it, may, we may have to rethink, and add those additional measures Mr. Decopoulos was saying, and kind of tighten it up. And then we need to, once we delegate it, we need to have a measurement to oversee that what we have delegated is actually happening. You don't hire a contractor and say, build the home, here is the money, and not know what stage of the building they are in. It is our responsibility. If the safety is violated, it's not the district's responsibility, it's the board's responsibility, because we didn't have systems of oversight of the delegated responsibility. I think, I'd like to take the safety very seriously, because I would like to see our schools become a truly trauma-informed school system, where everybody feels they belong, and they can come, and they can have the full potential they can actualize, without having to worry about who is sexually harassing them, or bullying them, or they're scared to go to the bathroom, or scared to walk back to home. That is not acceptable. We need to start thinking like that, because we had close to eight thousand suspensions, and lots of expulsion. Only two appeal came to the board. That shows to me that remaining parents either were not aware, or maybe they're scared to appeal, or they are scared of the consequences. So, to me, it may, I can't understand the reason, but it allows you to start looking at it. It's a red flag for me. So that's the way we should start drilling down, and saying, what else can we learn? Why the others didn't show up and ask for an appeal when this happened? So.
Thank you. Okay. So I'll just do a little bit of a recap, so we can hopefully wrap it up here soon. So a lot of great ideas, I just highlighted to kind of read through, and I know others have been taking copious notes on all these ideas, and kind of the reasoning behind why the board directors are bringing them forward. Obviously, we just went through safety, making education a priority, new results policies, student behavior management, disciplinary policies, reviews of all these policies, and hopefully some updating of them. High-quality education, mentorship and tutoring, authentic family engagement, food, grading, and that's one I can get behind, Raylin. And then life skills, you know, establishing a policy committee, in whatever way we determine that will be the most helpful for improvement of our policies. Pathways to better mental health, grow-your-own-staff programs, addressing sexual harassment in schools, health equity, disability equity, working with legislators to ensure full funding. So that's a long list, I probably missed some key ones, so my apologies, we'll have really great notes from tonight. I really, I want to end by thanking the superintendent and her team for all they do. There's so many items that we've covered tonight, and that all of you in the executive leadership of the district and others have worked really hard on. And so I just want to be really clear that tonight was not intended to criticize the district. It's just simply a time for us to share the issues of importance to us as school board directors, and then try to find the right pathway forward, within all of our governing policies and our rules, and through the collaborative relationship with the superintendent and her team. I also just want to state that, and remind all of us as board directors, that it's, it's not helpful to share rumors, and it's not helpful to state things on the record that are patently false about some of the district operations. When we do this in a public meeting, it can really be harmful, so my ask is that we really work hard to ground-truth rumors, before we bring them into the public meeting with the superintendent and her team, and that we learn about all of the processes that the educators use from year to year, to ensure that students are getting the best possible education. I really appreciate the participation tonight. Board leadership, as I mentioned in the beginning, we're going to be looking at all of these awesome ideas that have come from everyone, and we'll probably be reaching out to you with questions, as we try to arrange them by themes, and then come up with some draft goals that you would all have input into. And I think I mentioned also, once we have draft goals, then we also need to work on those measurables that, that go along with the goals, as you've talked about, Director Shonda Gary. So once you have a goal, then you can create the action plan to achieve that goal, which would definitely include measurable outcomes. So that's sort of the process that I'm proposing we use, always open to feedback, if you don't like the process, but I think it will help get us from point A to point B relatively quickly, incorporating all of your ideas, thoughts, and we can really start the school year off, doing great things for our kids and for our educators. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 8:01. Thank you so much.
Thank you.